I'd like to welcome everyone for the planning board hearing for Monday, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, for the town of Brookhaven. All everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, limited, and justice for all. Before we begin, I'd like to say that if anyone is in the chatroom who wants to speak on any of the items that are on the agenda this afternoon, please put your name next to the item number or agenda name so that council can hear you to speak on that particular item. Okay, at this time I have a roll call. Ms. Zorkon.
Present.
Ms. Kelly. Ms. Kelly.
She's muted.
Mr. Walutus.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
And Mr. Rose is absent with an excuse. Vincent Pascal is present. Miss, we also have with us counsel to the planning board, Ms. Lee Ray, commissioner of the planning department, Ms. Beth Riley, and secretary of the planning board, Ms. Island McCallion. Ms. McCallion, are there any items on the agenda that will not be heard this afternoon?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number nine, American Region Expansion at Shirley is requested to be held until May third. And also, also night, item number eleven, Virginia Avenue at Roncockama has requested to be held until April fifth.
All right, thank you, Ms. McCallion. At this time, I'd like to start with item number one, some miscellaneous matter, public storage of Mount Sinai. Commissioner? Commissioner?
Sorry.
And number one, public storage of Mount Sinai.
The application is for public storage at Mount Sinai, five oh eight Route twenty-five A in Mount Sinai, on the southeast corner of Route twenty-five A and Chestnut Street, zoned J-two business and A-one residential. It's three point six-four acres. The applicant is proposing to do a facade modification at the existing facility. They're proposing to paint the facility an orange color. The staff recommendations, there are five, last dated three nineteen twenty twenty, and the staff recommendation includes to refresh the painting scheme for white and beige, to not approve the orange.
Thank you, Commissioner, counselor of the applicant present.
Yes, I'm asking Mark Soroka. Adam Tardif.
Okay, I don't see anybody coming into the meeting yet.
Is Mark Soroka present?
Okay.
Yes, I, yes, I put him into the meeting.
Okay, Mr. Soroka, are you there?
I am, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear, I could also see.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know, it's.
Please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell, Mr. Soroka?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, I can't see you. Raise your right hand, please. Let me know when it's up.
It's up, I raised my hand.
Okay, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Nothing but the truth. Yes, sir.
Okay, so you'll represent this application, do you want to go over it with the public and the board? Why are you looking to change the elevation colors? Mr. Soroka? Counselor, we lose him?
In the meeting, Mr. Soroka.
You want me to speak on, on behalf of public storage?
Sure.
So, public storage wants to change, we would not be, they would not be painting the brick, it would just be.
One second, please hold on, are you Mr. Soroka or Mr. Targor?
I'm Mr. Tardif, I'm with Image National, we're the sign company that's doing this signs for public storage.
Okay, so you're Adam Targor?
Tardif.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, sorry to interrupt you.
So, in the middle where it has the picture or the depiction of the sign and public storage in the middle, that panel would be the only thing that's being painted on this side of the building. The rest of what you see would actually not be painted. I have a newer rendition, if you'd like to see that.
Well, we need to see the rendition as being proposed.
Okay.
On.
Can I share my screen?
I'm not sure how that would work on Zoom meeting, we could try, Commissioner, can you, is Matt there with you?
We need Michelle to authorize it as the host.
It says share at the bottom, I'm not sure if it'll let, oh, nope, I have to.
Hey Beth, what are you looking to do?
Can Mr. Tardif share his screen to show us an elevation?
Yeah, you just have to stop sharing.
Okay.
Okay, just one second.
Can you pick up by line, Matt?
Can I what?
I'm sorry, that wasn't for you.
Oh.
Are you, are you able to share?
Yeah, just one second.
Okay.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so, we are proposing the orange would just be where the sign is here and over the door, so it would not be painting any of the masonry brick for this particular elevation.
Can I ask you a question, this is Richard Smith, board member?
Sure.
Why do you want to change the color?
So, public storage is, has national branding colors of orange, and that's their coloring, and we like to, they like to have these standards on all of their buildings. So, the big bright orange is just a trademark, that, a national trademark that they use in order to have their customers identify their buildings.
I have a question for a commissioner. Is it possible that this was approved when it was first constructed, approved with the more muted coloration for this particular location?
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith?
Is it possible that when this was originally approved by the planning board, that it was subject to the more muted colors for this particular location?
Yes, this, the application that you see the existing is how it was approved. Now, this site is currently located in the Route twenty-five A, Mount Sinai Hamlet Center Overlay District, and one of the objectives of that overlay district is to strengthen the Hamlet Center identity and attractiveness through improved corridor aesthetics, signage, streetscape, public spaces, design and landscaping. So, we wouldn't, that's why we're not recommending the orange, we're asking that it remain the same. We do recognize that they're going to be putting an orange sign, which they currently have, we're not saying no to that, although that would have to be wood carved, wood simulated pursuant to the staff recommendations, but we, we are not recommending the orange color for that reason.
Thank you.
Beth, can I ask you a question? This is board number Pete Zorkon. Was it proposed the last time for the orange and it was denied?
That I don't know, I'd have to search our files for that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselors, is there anyone, the public ones coming on this application?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anything else you'd like to add to this application, Mr. Targor?
I'm, I was just going to show you the other elevation on the other side of the building. Again, just another, a band of orange and then some orange over the door.
Any other board members have questions, Ms. Targor?
Yeah, I do, this is a board member, Steve Walutus. I don't quite understand, you want the public storage sign to be in orange, but how about the rest of that whole wall, is that all orange now?
No, it's beige.
And you want to change that to orange, or you don't want to?
We do, the proposed is to change it to orange.
The whole wall there, right?
The whole wall, except the masonry, what's, what's depicted in the picture.
Yeah, if you look at the top of the screen, Steve, it says existing, and then the proposed is turning it to orange.
I see, I see, okay, thank you.
In addition, this, this elevation that we're seeing, we've never seen before, we don't have this, but it is showing an internally illuminated sign, and the staff recommendation is not for that, to have wood carved wood simulated with gooseneck.
Have wood carved what?
Wood carved or wood simulated signs, in addition to gooseneck lighting, that's in the staff recommendations, last dated three nineteen twenty twenty-one, have you seen those?
I have not seen that.
Okay, so I can share them on the screen, but I'd need you to stop sharing.
Read item number two when you get a chance, when it comes up.
Okay. Wood carved or similar signage with direct lighting, so could you explain direct lighting?
Gooseneck lighting, commonly known as gooseneck, not, not rearlit. Like I said, this is in the twenty-five A Hamlet Center Overlay District, and there are guidelines for that.
Is this online?
Is what online?
Is this picture that you're showing me, or this screenshot you're sharing?
This is, yes, this is currently on our agenda.
Okay. So, today only is the paint, but the, the signs, are they also being considered today?
Our staff recommendations address them because they were on your elevations. As part of your facade.
Okay, why, I wasn't, that wasn't made clear to me till now, okay. So, do we need to go through each sign, or just the ones that have paint on?
All signs that are proposed to be changed would need to comply, all signage shall be applied with the building division and comply with the wood carved and direct lighting.
Mark Soroka is wanting to join the, the conversation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have, it's under Harley Spratt.
All right, is, is it public or the applicant?
He's part of the applicant.
Hello.
Can you raise your right hand, Soroka?
I'm Mr. Harley Spratt.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I do want to add a little bit, so, the design that Adam was just sharing with you did actually show non-illuminated signs with gooseneck, with gooseneck lighting over the top of it, so I think that might have been misunderstood, that, that sign was not internally illuminated that we were proposing.
That's what the plan said, that he, showing.
You're saying what we're looking at is in what you're proposing?
I, so what you have shown here is not what we're proposing, yes, well, see right there, you have goosenecks, that's, this is a rendering that we created, or that public storage had requested for the paint, so we had created a design in order to capture their request. In that request, we had just, we had received information from them that they had not, they do not, no longer want to do brick painted, but they do still want to do the orange band, I understand that that's not something that will be acceptable and we can readjust from there, but what I would like to speak about is the wood, typical kind of wood look for the back of the sign, we have tried to incorporate that in our signage, and the gooseneck signage, we have also tried to incorporate that, our signs are not internally illuminated that we're proposing.
This one, this is Richard Smith again, this particular sign that you're showing looks like just something painted right on the wall of the building. And, and it's fairly large, too.
This rendering is, is a paint-only scheme plan here, so this is a very, very.
It's a rough draft.
It's a very rough draft, yeah, so it's, it's very preliminary. The design that I would like to show is the design that Adam had previously tried to share, and I think there was some confusion about if it was internally illuminated, as it's, it's very clearly listed as externally illuminated.
You have those plans now?
I do.
Is there something we could share a screen, or you just want to hold this to the next meeting so they can submit?
If I could share my screen, I would love to do that.
We can, but our staff hasn't reviewed it, and our recommendations aren't, aren't written for a plan that we don't have yet.
Okay, so I'd like to hold this open to a certain date so that we can review the new plans that are being presented. Counselor?
Yes, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
I believe that, that the plans that we have sent, I'm not sure, I guess we have sent them in, but I'm not sure if they've been sent to the right people, I guess.
Well, we, what we're looking at is what the board has received in our package, so if we're going to look at new elevations depicting different sign types with the gooseneck lighting, that something has to be submitted, I think Mr. Schroeder is the reviewer on this application, if you can make sure he gets this, we'll hold this open to the next date.
I, well, I would like to say that in the rendering that you were just looking at, it does not indicate anywhere on that rendering that it's externally illuminated, it actually does show the goose, like, gooseneck illumination, so that would indicate that it's an external illumination, so that might be something that you could advise on right now, I mean, is that acceptable? I understand the paint is not acceptable, but the extra illumination that we have shown.
When is the next board meeting?
April fifth.
April sixth?
April fifth.
Fifth. Can I have a motion to hold this hearing open until April fifth, the date certain?
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve Walutus, I make a motion to hold this application open until April fifth for the next board meeting.
Okay, have a second, please.
Mr. Chairman, board number Pete Zorkon, I'll second that motion.
Ms. Kelly? Ms. Kelly? You're muted, Ms. Kelly.
Why, sorry, I, I vote aye.
Okay, Mr. Ro, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six oh, if you can submit those elevations as soon as possible, so it can be reviewed for the April sixth, April fifth meeting, that would be wonderful, okay, Mr. Spratt?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just having some tough difficulty with the technology right now, I just need a minute to get the agenda back up, okay?
Just let this down when you're ready, Commissioner.
Chairman, can I take this moment to remind everyone who's in the queue, I have, no one has really responded, so if you're in the queue and you'd like to speak, please, in the chat or the Q and A function, let me know what application you're here for, and if you're from the public or you represent the applicant, thank you.
Are we ready? I'm waiting for the commissioner.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, all right, are we ready to move on item number two? Okay, item number two is also miscellaneous matter, Westy Funeral Home in Santa Maria.
Application is located at four ninety-five Main Street in Santa Maria, three hundred feet west of Chi Chester Avenue, it's own J-business, is one point three one acres in size. The application is to modify the previously approved plan for a two thousand eight hundred sixty-four square foot, one-story addition to the existing funeral home, including a parking lot expansion. There are four staff recommendations, last dated three two twenty-one.
Counselor, is the applicant present?
Yes, Matthew Elwood with R and M Engineering in Huntington, on behalf of the owner of the applicant.
What's the last name?
Elwood, A-Y-L-W-A-R-D.
Mr. Elwood, can you raise your right hand, please? You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Okay. Playing the application for the board.
The application for West Funeral Home was the, in May of two thousand nineteen, the application was before the planning board received conditional approval, and then eventually received final approval, then pulled, built, pulled their building permit. At the time that they pulled the permit, they went to construction and they found that the fees were a little bit higher, or the cost of construction was higher than what they anticipated, so they started to value engineer some things, and while they were doing that, they saw some issues on the site that they would like to rectify, to make things a little bit cheaper, make things actually even a little bit nicer in terms of curb appeal from the, from Montauk Highway. So, there were seven items that they modified, moving some parking around, changing some land banked areas, paving some land banked areas. If I could share my screen, I could, I could walk everybody through it, is that possible?
Could be able to.
I have the site plan up.
Okay, there was, there was one that I actually had this, I highlighted seven areas where we made the changes. But, anyway. So, just to continue on, the, maybe we've got it.
While we're waiting for the screen to come up, have you received a copy of the staff recommendations?
No, I haven't.
We'll put them up if we review the site plan.
Okay.
It just takes a very long time for these documents to load because they're so large, do you know what page it's on?
It was called the redline plan, it was in the, it was part of the information that was listed on the website.
Okay, hold on, it's going to take me some time to load it, that's.
Sure. But the, the changes really, we found made, made it really much, much nicer of a, of a view from Montauk Highway, you know, it moved some of the parking further to behind the building, instead of on the west side of the building, and we feel that it really kind of enhances the property through those changes.
I can't get to it.
Okay, I'll try, I'll try to, I'll go through. So, on the west side of the building, between the building and the school, we previously had seven parking spots parallel to the curb line there, and what we found was, like, the view from Montauk Highway, if we could move those parking spots to the back, maybe land bank some of them, then you wouldn't see the parking, you know, straight off of, of Main Street, so we shifted them into the back and to the north, and we cleared a little bit more into the adjacent area along the school. That area was previously land banked, now we're just going to pave those. If you look to the south, I'm sorry, be the west, northwest corner, we're trying to save a tree, so we're going to land bank a stall there, in that little island. The next thing was, we were taking off a section of the garage. There was an addition put on the back of the garage some time ago, the applicant, the owner found that they didn't really need all that space in that detached garage, so they took the back piece off, the back half off, and, and provided three parking stalls in that area. And then also, I think one of the last things was the awning, they had an awning off the front of the building, which they decided to, to take off as well.
The, the parking stalls that were on the west boundary there, were they part of the handicap parking, was that moved to the rear where those two spots are now, was that relocated?
Yeah, the handicap, right, so we found, I forgot to mention that, looking at the previous plan, there was like a C handicap ramp that would get us up into the first floor, and we found that it was tough because people would have to walk around that in the drive aisle to get to the front door, so we realigned it so that it was along the building wall, and it came down, and in order to do that, we had to push the handicap stalls to the other side of the drive aisle, right, but what it does is, it provides this better circulation for all people walking into the main entrance, because now they have a sidewalk to walk on to get to the front door, as opposed to just walking in that drive aisle.
Counselor, is there anyone in the public on this application?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any board, did you get a opportunity to look at those recommendations? They were on the screen briefly. Can you put them back up so the applicant can review the recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, do you need me to move anything else on the screen for you? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wanted to see the staff recommendations so the applicant can review them.
I'm sorry, we just have this new system, so I'm trying to learn it as we go here. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Elwood, can you see those?
Yes.
You have any questions on those four items?
No, not at all.
Okay, and no questions by the public? You have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Second, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zorkon.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutus?
I vote aye.
The chair votes aye, motion carries six oh, thank you, Ms. Elwood.
Thank you very much.
Item number three is also miscellaneous matter, Lucheritos at Santa Maria.
The application is for Lucheritos at Santa Maria, located at one seventy-seven Montauk Highway in Santa Maria, it's split zone J-business two and A-residence one, and is point six five three acres in size. The application is to modify a previous approved site plan for an addition to the restaurant. There are six staff recommendations, last dated two eleven twenty-one.
Thank you, Commissioner, Counselor, is the applicant present?
Yes, just a moment. All right, go, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and rest of the board. My name is Stephen Kiley, P O Box five six seven, Manitowoc, New York, one one nine five two.
Go.
Somebody say something?
Can you, you're attorney, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, I'm the attorney for Mark Lemaina, owner of Lucheritos, the applicant. I'm here today to address some discrepancies between the approved site plan and what is on the ground. First, the siding, the siding on the addition differs from the original building, and this is because that the particular siding that was on the original building no longer exists. Hold on one second. Let's ask me, my client used a half inch by six beveled edge clear cedar instead, and it was stained with two coats of Benjamin Moore exterior solid stain. Second item is the awning, the awning was on the. Uh, the awning was on the original building, and we just carried it over when we put on the addition. Third, the patio, there was an existing patio which was located where the new addition is, so it's, was originally underneath the footprint of the addition, and we just shifted it east in kind. For, uh, sconce lighting, uh, we installed lighting for safety reasons, uh, for the ramp on the south side of the building, and on the east for the walkway and patio. Uh, fifth, the roof sign, uh, Nettie's, the original bakery, that was running out of the subject site, had an identical sign in this particular location, and we just replaced it in kind, same size, same coloration. We spoke to H T A C about it, uh, they seemed fine. Uh, the, number six, the double tool fence. Uh, this is a bamboo fence which was installed to screen the compressor in order to beautify the property. Number seven, the rooftop deck. This was installed at the behest of the fire marshal, for health and safety purposes. Um, my client worked directly with the fire marshal on the design, and subsequently constructed it, and it was only thereafter that we found out that we may need approvals for. Uh, number eight, the shutters, uh, shutters were installed, uh, surrounding the south side addition window. The contractor neglected to put them on, and we have rectified that situation. Uh, number nine, windows. In the original building, there, four by four, uh, windows, and inadvertently, they were not utilized for the addition. Um, if the board requires, we can modify, uh, the one by one windows to four by four. If memory serves me right, the H T C didn't have a major issue with that. Outdoor seating, uh, we removed all of the outdoor seating from the A1 residential rezoned portion of the property. Then there's two last items, uh, is the 16 by 20 forum stand. Uh, we would like to submit a change of use application in the future, changing that building into retail. And, uh, lastly, there's an outdoor bar area with the roof over. We already removed the roof, uh, but it's located to the east of the detached kitchen, and similarly, we would like to submit a change of use application in the future to use that space. Uh, we will not use other space until we get the necessary.
You're gonna come back for the change of use application on this site? Is that what I heard?
I'm sorry, sir, could you repeat?
I, I thought, I thought I heard you say you were gonna come back with a change of use application?
Uh, that, that's what, uh, Mr. Schroeder suggested I do, as far as the, if we wanted to utilize the farm stand for anything else other than a farm stand, we'd have to come back to see you. And, uh, also, with the outdoor bar, that again was pre-existing on the site, uh, because it had joined, uh, if you could see, the kitchen, it says former bakery on the, uh, west side of the property. We'd like to just use that and continue to use it. But again, I think that would necessitate, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but another change of use application, or an amendment to the site plan application.
Have you received a copy of the staff recommendations?
Uh, yes, sir, I pulled it off the, uh, website.
Okay. Counselor, is anyone in the public on this application?
No, Mr. Chairman.
There was also a roof sign that needed to come down?
Yeah, I referenced that earlier, so that was the old Nettie sign. Um, that was there when we purchased the property. And I, I'm not sure if it had approvals, but the H T A C remembered it, and they have no problem with the sign. Um, originally, my guy took artistic license and, and put a larger sign, uh, than that Nettie's original. We removed it and brought it back to the same specs of the Nettie's sign with the same colors. Um, and the H T A C was fine with it, and, uh, you know, arguably, I think it could be considered a wall sign, in my reading of the, uh, definitions, but, you know.
We, it was to come down, it was not approved by Nettie, when it was up by Nettie's, and it's a roof sign, so in order to keep that sign, it would need to go to the B Z A, and that sign was supposed to be down.
I was working directly with the H T A C at the time, and they said I could, you know, put it back up so long as it was, uh, you know, in the same, with the same specs as Nettie's.
We did not find a permit for that sign, just to advise you.
Okay, that's fine, I, I, it was just our understanding that it was legal. It's not, that's, yeah, absolutely, we'll have to, uh, address that.
Any board members have questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, this is Richard Smith. The, the roof, the, the roof deck, is, is that a deck where people are gonna go up and, and do dining? No, 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 no. The, the roof deck is just, if anybody needs to work on the exhaust equipment, it's for worker's safety, and again, w- we didn't, it wasn't in our wildest dreams that we would have to build it. It was the fire marshal who came and told us we had to. Um, there, there are requirements for a parapet for that sort of thing, not necessarily a, a deck, but, so there's not, gonna be no dining up there. Oh, no, 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 absolutely, no public up there whatsoever, no employees, only people that, contractors that come to fix the exhaust system. It's just a parapet for the safety of people who work on the roof. Absolutely, there will be zero public employee use of that space. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions by the board? Do they have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion closed by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Alutis.
I vote aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 6-0, thank you.
Thank you very much, board.
Item number four is a miscellaneous matter, 1110 Hallack Avenue, S V A Realty at Port Jeff Station.
1110 Hallack Avenue, Port Jefferson Station is located in a J business two zone and is .524 acres. The request is to eliminate a basement from an approved 250 square foot addition. There are five staff recommendations, last dated, um, 3/21.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this application? I don't have anyone who responded for number four.
Is the applicant present, Counselor?
No.
I have the name Eric Nicosia and Robert Palina as our applicants on this one.
They're not in the, in the chat room yet, Counselor?
No, I don't have them in the, in the queue.
I'll come back to application. Item number five, Burger King, North Ocean Avenue, Horse Block Road in Farmingville, uh, Farmingville.
Located at 2250 North Ocean Avenue in Farmingville, 651 feet south of Horse Block Road. It's own J business two, and is .99 acres in size. The application is for a facade change. There are eight staff recommendations, last dated 3/10/21.
Thank you, Commissioner, Counselor, is the applicant present?
No, I don't have anyone who signed in for number five. Um, there's cer, some people have not responded, so if there's anyone here for number five.
I have Pete Ricardo on this one, Lee.
Ricardo available yet?
Did you have who on the application?
Pete Ricardo.
And a Peter in the queue? I don't, I don't know which one that would be, if it's either one. Someone can message me, I haven't received any message for number five. I also haven't received a message for number 11, Virginia Avenue.
All right, well, come back that too.
Virginia, I have a new thing adjourned.
Yeah, just, oh, okay, just a moment, um, I have someone coming in now.
The Burger King?
Yes.
Okay.
And now they're gone. I, I think you, we have to come back to this, Mr. Chairman, they were there, and I let them in, and now it's gone. That link is gone.
Come back to that one. Item number six, Churchers, St. Rod, Mahalia.
Application is located at 30316 Terryville Road in Port Jefferson Station, on the west side of Terryville Road, 1,324 feet south of Neshkonsa Highway. The application is for revised architectural plans for new windows facing Terryville Road. The previously approved site plan for the proposed construction of a parish, parish center addition, existing thrift shop and associated site improvements. There are two staff recommendations, last dated 3/10/21.
Thank you, Commissioner, Counselor, is the applicant present?
Yes.
What?
Mr. Chairman, Father Greg Rennessy, the pastor of St. Rod's.
Good afternoon, Pastor.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay, have you received a copy of the staff recommendations?
Uh, the architect, uh, Rob Peterson, from Core Group, is also on this call.
Can anybody hear me okay?
I can hear you, Mr.
Mr. Chairman, I did not receive, uh, any, uh, recommendations from the staff.
Okay, we'll put them up in the meantime, can you raise your right hand? You swear or affirm to tell the truth, to hold truth, to nothing but the truth, to help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, this is the staff recommendations, only two of them, the last revised on March 10.
Okay. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, or?
Yes.
Okay, so, I just want to thank the board for this opportunity to, uh, be with you again. I've appeared twice before, uh, last time was, uh, last year, February 4th of 19, um, and today, we're seeking, uh, an amendment to the approved site plan from that day, uh, to have three new windows, um, installed in, uh, in between the two existing windows on the east side, uh, the east wall that faces Terryville Road. And as you probably likely know from the documentation, um, that you had before, um, this meeting, uh, we received positive endorsements from the Historical District Advisory Committee and the Port Jeff Station Terryville Civic Association. So our hope is in, uh, beautifying the interior, um, will also, um, help the, uh, the view from the, uh, street on Terryville Road.
Okay, well, it looks good, but, uh, is anyone in the public who's, wanna speak on this, uh, Counselor?
Chairman?
No?
No.
Okay, any board members have questions? Do you not have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion closed by Mr. Smith.
Second that motion.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Alutis.
I vote aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 6-0, thank you, Pastor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Did, did anyone come in for item number four or five yet, Counselor?
I have number five.
Okay.
Let me see if there, if I can figure it out. I'm having some technical difficulties.
Lee, we're doing Burger King?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I have the architect in. For Burger King.
I don't see anyone yet.
There, I have their, um, them in the meeting, but it's not coming on, and I don't know why. All right, do you wanna go to number seven while I'm trying to figure it out?
Item number seven, Colonial Youth at Mastic.
Located at 176 Madison Street in Mastic, Zone J Business, is .99 acres. The application is to convert a former Knights of Columbus to a daycare facility. There are 10 staff recommendations, last dated 3/22/21.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm showing nine, but maybe I don't have the updated. Mine's updated March 16. If you could put those up, is the applicant present, Counselor?
Yes, I'm Mr. Toll.
Okay, you wanna bring the applicant in?
Please, end.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, can you please raise your right hand?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
You swear or affirm to tell the truth, to hold truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you God?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you wanna go over the application for the board?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, uh, my name is Fred Toll from East Coast Marketing, I'm representing the applicant, which in this instance is the Knights of Columbus and Colonial Youth, which is a family and service, uh, nonprofit organization based out of the Mastic Shirley area. With us today on the phone is Bob Rettonhour and Rick Weathersome, our two architects that have worked on the site plan at this location. Colonial Youth, uh, it's a 40-plus-year organization in the area. They're located at a property in Riches. That property has now been acquired by the community library. The library is renovating the building over the next 18 months, so Colonial became homeless. Um, the Knights of Columbus stepped up to allow Colonial to use their hall to run their daycare operations out of, uh, to seek, uh, state approval to do that. We had to deal with some matters that existed on the building, one of which was amending and resolving the site plan, which is what we're here before you today. Uh, doing some parking and drainage improvements, uh, to the site that would allow the su, site to be more conducive for the purpose of the daycare facility.
Have you received a copy of the staff recommendations?
No, I have not.
Okay, they're on the screen now, Mr. Toll, can you review those?
Yeah, the, it, two items that are just quickly standing out, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, one is, number one, the last plan was submitted by Mr. Rettonhour, uh, earlier this month, so that would actually have been the last plan that the town received in March of 2021. And we had indicated there was going to be the need for some highway work, uh, with some changes or adjustments to the driveway. Uh, that does not need to be done, at least from our point of view at this point, so we would not need any highway work. That would be the only two things that jump out at me looking at this quickly.
I think, can you a, address that? I don't know why they wouldn't need a highway work permit if they're doing curbs or something, uh.
No, the curbs, yeah, the curbs are already existing. There was some discussion of readjusting the driveway, or the apron, if you would. There's an apron on the east and north side of the property, but it turns out, those aprons don't have to be adjusted. So that would have been the cause of the highway work. The curbing and sidewalk is already there, in fact, the curbing and sidewalk at that site had been burned by the town of Brookhaven 20 years ago.
Who, who made the, uh, opinion that it didn't have to be adjusted on the north side, the ingress, egress?
Originally, when we put together the site plan, we thought we were going to have to adjust it because of where the parking lot was being laid out. But in the final rendering that Mr. Rettonhour submitted, we're of the thought that it does not have to be changed at the moment, and obviously, no one from the town has told us anything contrary to that. We were suggesting it had to be moved, and now we're no longer suggesting.
Okay, so that's what's being depicted on this site plan that we're looking?
Correct, correct, and, and in the, in the end of the day, it's a temporary app, uh, applicant in that they'll be in the building for approximately 18 months. Ultimately, we'll look to return the hall back to the K F C hall. It's not gonna be a permanent fixture, they're gonna be there for approximately 18 months.
And there's still a town board covenant on this particular parcel?
It was removed by the town board in January, and the covenants and restriction paperwork is being prepared now to be filed. I imagine that'll be sometime in the next three to four weeks, uh, for that to be done. The fire marshal's office is being scheduled to come out and do their final inspection on the building, and then the state would come out to do their final inspection. The town, through Councilman Panico's office, has been very gracious to. The town, through Councilman Panico's office, has been very gracious to help Colonial find a temporary home while we're doing this application. And they're currently occupied out of the Mastic Rec Center, and they're paying the town rent for that. That arrangement is due to come to an end in mid-April. So we're hopeful if everything goes well today with this hearing and we can get the rest of our paperwork in on time, that ultimately sometime in the next thirty to sixty days Colonial will be actually able to move into the Knights of Columbus law and end this saga.
Counselor, is there anyone in the public who wants to speak on this application?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Any board members have questions for the applicant?
Just one question. Most daycare centers require a playground for the kids. Because this is temporary, you're not doing it, or is there one that I'm not seeing here?
It's going to be a very small moving of a few pieces of playground equipment to the Knights of Columbus property. Some of the items are those seahorse-type rides and things of that nature. And there'll be a few pieces of that equipment moved to the site and then ultimately moved back to Mariches when Colonial returns to its permanent home.
And and that's going to be in a fenced area?
The whole property now is fenced as it currently exists. And I believe we had originally depicted that on the west grass side of the site. Most of the property is grass or RCA as it exists, with the exception of building.
I'm not sure which direction. Actually, the west side or the or the north side?
West side, I believe. Bob or Rick, are you on the line? I think I might have lost.
All right, now, I think he's just, I'll let him in, hold on.
Great. As I said, it's a few pieces of equipment as they're joining us.
So it's actually at the northwest corner that you're talking about, that grass area?
Yeah, I think probably mid mid north-south actually more, but close enough, it is that side.
Okay.
And we obviously will meet the setback requirements. There's a woods to the west side of the property, but we'll obviously conform with the setback requirement. It's a pretty good-sized piece of property.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
No problem.
I have the architect in the meeting if you wanted to speak.
Yeah, I think we addressed it, but if they have anything to add, they can jump in.
Any questions by the board? Seeing none, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Closed by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Secondly, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zorko.
I vote aye.
Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Aludis?
I vote aye.
Yeah, votes aye, motion carries six oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the members of the board. We appreciate your help and consideration.
Item number eight is a change of use with a variance at McDonald Corporation in Manorville.
The application is located at five five sixty County Road, one eleven, two hundred and fifty feet west of Chapman Boulevard in Manorville. Property is owned J Business Two and is point six two three acres in size. The proposal is the addition of a side-by-side drive-through facade renovation and ADA ADA upgrades requiring a parking variance. There are eleven staff recommendations, one planning board variance for amount of parking in a commercial center. And the staff recommendations are last dated three two twenty-one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counselor is the African present?
Yes, I am. Can you all hear me?
I can hear you. Is Mr. Brown?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman. How are you today?
I'm doing well. How are you?
I'm doing well. I like, how is the planning commissioner too? How is she doing?
Always the best. She won't say that, but I will.
Okay, I'll be brief. It's a very straightforward application. You'll know it is. This is the McDonald's located on County Route one eleven on the west side that's attached to the King Cullen Shopping Center. I can only see the chairman in the upper right, which is fine by me. I just don't know if the board members can see the site plan in front of them.
Yes, they can.
Okay, very good. So, good afternoon, Chairman Pascal, members of the planning board, Keith Brown, Brown, Almond, Valio, LLP. Located at five thirty-eight Broad Hall Road, Street three oh one West, Melville, New York, one one seven four seven. Thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. I'm here today with respect to McDonald's application for, one, a change of use to remodel the facade of the existing restaurant and add a side-by-side drive-through. Two, to make ADA site improvements. And three, as part of the overall of site improvements, the McDonald's requested parking variance to reduce the overall shopping center's parking count by only three, three stalls. Okay, the existing parking count for the centers, three forty-six, there's a prior variance granted from four fifty-five, and we're taking that three forty-six and just lowering it by three stalls for three forty-three. I would like to also point out, and I'm stealing some of the thunder of our traffic expert, but if this McDonald's was a standalone restaurant with a drive-through, it would meet the codes criteria for parking. As a matter of housekeeping, the public notice posting at all mailings for the hearing will perform in accordance with the town code and have it submitted to the town prior to this afternoon's hearing. With me today is Mr. Marty Swiger, PE from Core States Group, the project civil engineer. Patrick Bleese, RA from Core States, the project architect, and Mr. Ethan Chikowski, PE from Atlantic Traffic Design, our traffic engineer. In advance of the hearing, McDonald's has provided the board with the following documents in support of the application. I should also, I'm sorry, I should also point out that my associate, Matthew Ingber is also on the line. In advance of the hearing, McDonald's provided the following documents in support of the application, an aerial photograph of the property, an aerial photograph of the shopping center, the site plan you see before you, a color rendering, and a traffic report prepared by Atlantic Traffic and Design. As previously noted, the applicant is seeking to approve the McDonald's site by making ADA upgrades, installing a side-by-side drive-through, and updating the facade. The existing restaurant has been there since circa nineteen ninety-four. It's located on the south side. Actually, make that the west side of County Route one eleven is part of the Manorville Town Shopping Center and surrounded by other businesses and commercial uses. To the north across Route one eleven is an Italian restaurant and undeveloped vacant land. To the east of the property is a seven eleven, I think that's the south, excuse me, is followed by undeveloped naturally vegetated land. To the west is undeveloped wooded area followed by the shopping center, which is CBS, a restaurant, and a Wendy's as well. And the property immediate adjacent consists of approximately fourteen acres, which includes the Federal Credit Union, the King Cullen, and a number of other commercial businesses. The purpose of the application is to improve the efficiency of the restaurant by adding the side-by-side drive-through, improve the architectural appearance of the restaurant, and make much-needed ADA upgrades. Respectfully submit that the balance of the area, area variance factors favor the applicant with respect to the parking. I know this board is familiar with those standards, so there's no need for me to go through them in terms of the character of the neighborhood, the benefit to the applicant, the size of the variance, and environmental conditions, and self-created hardship. All favor the granting of this application. With that said, if the board has any questions for the civil engineer, Marty Swiger, he could go first, followed by the architect, at last the traffic engineer.
Mr. Brown, have you received a copy of the staff recommendations?
I did, and we have no objections with them.
Okay. All right, is there anyone in the public on this, Counselor, right?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Any board members have questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Richard Smith. I'd just like a quick question on how this side-by-side drive-drive-through works.
Sure, I'll just before I bring on Ethan Chikowski to explain it. You're most familiar with the side-by-side on North Ocean Avenue in Farmingville, just south of Town Hall on the on the east side of the roadway.
No, I'm not. That's why I'm asking you how this works.
It's also similar to one in Center of Riches.
Right, right. Okay, so with that, Ethan, you want to explain as it relates to the site plan how the side-by-side will work?
Sure, this is Ethan Chikowski. I'm at Atlantic Traffic and Design. I'm at two nine two nine Expressway Drive North, Hop Dog, New York.
All right, can you raise your right hand, please? You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the hope truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so this is a very popular application, a side-by-side drive-through. You'll see them more and more with with any fast food restaurant, but especially McDonald's. You know, over the years, McDonald's has seen a large proportion of the drive-through traffic really shift from the dine-in traffic, especially on a commuter route. In addition, the menus expanded, you know, with that make cafe options, all day breakfast, you know, customers have a lot more choices. So they found when when they did their research that that really the choke point of the ordering process in a drive-through is is the ordering, not the pickup and the the payment window. You know, it takes about twice as long to order than it does to pay and pick up. So the side-by-side drive-through operates by allowing orders to be taken at once. McDonald's, you know, has put a lot of research into carefully designing the side-by-side drive-throughs and developed several typical layouts that specify the radii dimensions, positions of the equipment. It works by taking a photo of the license plate and and vehicle at, you know, at the ordering point so that they can track each order as they go through the drive-through. So, you know, picture you're on a drive-through line and, you know, a big minivan with with a bunch of kids and you have a long complicated order. What the the side-by-side allows is for that order to be taken on one side, and then the quicker orders be taken on the other. And and what it does is by alleviating that choke choke point, it lets it reduces the amount of queuing that would possibly extend.
So basically, just simply said, you have a double line where you can order from either side of that line, and then it converges back into a single line?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions by the board? May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion closed by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Mr. Smith, Mrs. Zorko.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Aludis?
I vote aye.
Yeah, votes aye, motion carries six oh. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all. Stay safe. Take care.
You too. Okay, item number nine, American Regent Expansion at Farley is being held on May third. Item number ten, Michael J. Grant Funeral Home Expansion at Quorum.
The application is located at thirty-six forty Route one twelve in Quorum. It's Zone J Business Two and is point nine one four acres. Proposal is to construct a one-story addition to the fifteen hundred and eighteen square foot building with a three hundred and ninety-four square foot basement. There are ten staff recommendations and two planning board variances. Actually, I think it's down to one.
The counsel is the African present?
Yes, I'm sorry. Let me just, I just have, we have an updated staff report. I'm sorry. We have eight staff recommendations with one planning board variance and it's last revised March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Valmuth is here. You're muted, Jeff.
Is Valmuth there?
There you go.
Okay, now I'm unmuted, right? All right, good afternoon. My name's Jeff Valmuth. I am the.
Can you raise your right hand, please? You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the hope truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm the civil civil engineer on this project, Valmuth and Brush, two hundred Blue Point Avenue, Blue Point, New York. We're also the surveyors on this project. Michael Grant currently operates a funeral home at this site. And he's proposing an enlargement of the viewing rooms and improvements to the ADA access and parking areas on the site. Also, he's proposing a full exterior renovation of the facade and quite a bit of landscaping. The project was reviewed previously twice, two thousand and two and two thousand and eight by the planning board. This version of the site plan is essentially very similar to the two thousand and eight site plan that was previously approved. With the exceptions of, we have changed street trees, we've added some hedge plantings around the edge of the parking lot. And those are the major changes that we're asking for a the loading space to be land-banked, which is at the, I don't know if you, can you see me moving my cursor? I think, I hope, yes. At the northeast corner, if you look, you can see the existing line of the parking lot.
I can't see.
We're providing a total of forty spaces, which is to code. Not too much else to really talk about. Storm drainage to code. And the existing entrances are the way they are now. Where the gross square footage is changing from five thousand one sixty-three to six thousand four forty-eight, with the major change happening on the first floor, where there will be two, the exist, one of the existing viewing rooms will be enlarged and basically a new, brand-new viewing room. So total of two viewing rooms in the building.
Was there any inspection on the parking lot? Is that something that had to be done or?
Actually, what the engineering division has is requiring, I believe it's down in the right corner, talks about existing improvements. We have to take test cores in the parking lot. Valmuth and Brush inspected the drainage. The drainage is as was required, but the engineering section wants me to core the parking lot and take some samples of the curb because Mr. Grant did improve the parking lot area, pretty consistent with the two thousand and eight approval. But he he didn't get inspection when he did that. So we're going to have to get it to the point that engineering division accepts it. They provided me the notes. It's on the plan, bottom. Existing improvement notes.
Okay.
Bottom right.
You have civic comment on this as well, or Mr.?
Pardon me?
You you reached out the civic on the celebration modification.
There's a letter from the civics in the record.
There's a letter from civics in the record. They don't object to the the proposed renovation. I also have Peggy Kelly here, and I also have Michael Grant here, if you need to speak to him tomorrow.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Would have any questions?
I just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Steve.
This is Rick.
Rick, oh, okay.
All right, a question. This, you said this came in two, I remember looking at this this project or or a project for this site a number of years ago. That approval that they got, was that never constructed, and this is what they wanted to construct back then?
The exterior improvements were, the improvements to the parking lot were constructed, but they were constructed without benefit of inspection by engineering. So.
I'm talking, I'm talking about the addition.
No, the addition was not built.
All right, so the addition that the board approved back in two thousand and eight wasn't constructed, and at this time, you wish to construct it?
Yes, but the old site plan expired, so we couldn't do it.
Okay, thank you. I I I remember seeing this. I didn't know if it was an addition on top of an addition of the one that you never built, but thank you.
Okay.
Aludis, you have a question?
I have a question, yes. This is Steve Aludis. Do we have elevations?
Sure.
Those have elevations?
I I think they're avail, we submitted them with, I could show them also, but I I believe there you're going to be able to see them if they're on there. We submitted them digital.
They are in the packet.
Okay.
Color color renderings also.
Yeah, the color of color of the building, the side. Slowing, okay.
Jeff, did you get a copy of the staff recommendations?
Yes, the owner has reviewed them, and I've reviewed them. We have no objection to the recommendations.
Wrong one, sorry.
Don't you love technology?
What was that?
That was the application that was on hold. I'm sorry.
That wasn't color.
They were not color. Jeff would give us color, we know that. Uh-oh.
No, just screen down. You'll get them.
Is that it?
I don't know.
They'll come up. They just haven't popped up yet.
There we go. There we go. So that's White Hardy Boy. That's actually not the right. So that's white hardy board, that's actually not the right, not the updated one, you guys got updated ones on Friday.
Looks nice.
Pardon? They're in there, Peggy's telling me you have them. So it was white hardy board with black shutters with new shingle, what charcoal shutter, charcoal roof, white azac.
I don't know if we do have those.
Could I, hang on a second? Can I open up something or does it not work that way? No, you have them.
He did submit the revised elevations to staff, correct, Jeff?
Yes, yes. If 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 I can show, I can, you know, if you allow me to open, but I don't know if this will.
Joe, can you allow him to share? I'm gonna stop share.
Okay, so I'm gonna be able to share. We think. Hang on a moment. Where am I?
No pressure.
Okay, low, no pressure at all, this is one. Okay, that's the existing grant. There's the color of the roofing, that's your timberline sheet. Timberline shingles. The river rock is the along the foundation. Nantucket color. And then just simple white hardy board. With black shutters, I'm looking to see if I have the main the main view of this, hang on a second. Which one is it, right here, right? Or this one, this one? There you go. So, black shutters. Little bit of architectural treatment up at the front.
I don't see anything.
Anybody see it?
No, we have a white screen.
Maybe you gotta wait, hang on. Might be too big.
Commissions is like a race to see who come in last.
Were you able to see, were you able to see the photographs I was showing previously?
Yes.
Okay, so this is just more memory, see if it's coming in. See it yet?
No.
Mr. Chairman, can we approve something that wasn't submitted or reviewed by anybody else?
Let's look at it, it gives time, it's probably a lengthy file.
Hang on a minute.
Load, I would imagine.
Something's weird, just a minute. No. Just give me a second, gentlemen. I actually think they have it, I mean, I know they have it. Where? Now, we're gonna try it again, hang on. Lucky I have some technology whizzes here, see if this comes in.
Does that show up?
Yes.
Yeah.
What's the date on that?
This was submitted, what's the date?
What's the date on the bottom of it?
Okay, hang on.
Of your document.
Just a minute. Three eighteen. Can you see it or not?
I can't, but I'll take your word for it.
It's right there.
We see the elevator, you don't see the timestamp.
We see it.
Okay, so you can see it. The colors were put on. Okay, there's the river rock. There's your white hardy board, your black trim. And you should be able to see the date here. Right here in the corner. Okay, so you're all able to see that, correct?
Yes.
Now, this does not show landscaping around it, there's landscaping around it, obviously. And but that's how I would view from the road, I mean, there's street trees that are coming in here and there's some foundation plantings.
Jeff, this is the actual files that were uploaded, given to staff.
Yes, 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 Michael Albanal has them, Peggy confirmed that he has them this morning. Okay, and the photographs that I was showing previously were filed also. Yes, so.
So if we were to add a condition then that says subject to submission of elevation renderings prepared by Antoniad's Architects last dated. What was that date?
Three eighteen.
Would be good to add a number nine that said that?
Fine, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, I'm sorry, I mean, we did submit them, I don't, they didn't make it in.
Just so that the record is clear as to which plans we're talking about.
Okay. There's actually two, if it matters, there's two hundred and a one hundred.
That doesn't matter if you use today's date or the eighteenth.
It was submitted on the eighteen.
Eighteenth.
Well, the bottom, the date on the on on the drawing is is eighteen, that's why I want to say.
That's fine.
Now, you can see what I have on on the screen right now, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the ADA access ramps. Okay.
That's the rear?
That's the rear, that would be the west elevation. Okay.
Any other questions by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I, could I see the planning board recommendations, I only have seven, I know there's eight now.
Yeah, I just have to stop sharing, so I can do that now.
Okay, hang on. Look at that.
And I'd like to know which of the variants has been deleted. There were two originally.
Yeah, it's only gonna be eighty five, eight, five, five A, the front yard, the other one, we were able to resolve that, had already been taken care of.
Okay, if I could just see the eight recommendations.
Any other questions by the board? I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing and place it on the decision calendar, this is Steve Walutis.
Motion to close by Mr. Walutis.
Mr. Chairman, Board Member Pete Zorko, and I'll second that motion.
Second, Mr. Zorko, Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Votes aye, motion carries six oh, thank you, Mr. Valmuth.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, you got eleven ten Hallack.
No, I have no one here for number four, I'm gonna try to bring applicant in for number five.
Is that Mr. Ricardo?
Yeah, I I mean, I'm trying to get him in, I mean, I see him on the screen and I'm hitting the ask to unmute and the ask to start video. But I don't, I don't.
Can Michelle do it, or does he have to do it?
It looks like he's turning his video on now. But he still doesn't have his microphone on. I've asked him a couple times too. Up, here's the video.
While we're waiting, I just wanna mention that item number eleven, Virginia Avenue, the land division will be heard on April fifth.
All right, um. Are you unmuted?
No, I'm unmuted.
Okay, we can hear you.
Oh, good, okay, thank God, I don't know what's going on with my computer here. This here is an application.
One second, who am I speaking with?
Peter Ricardo.
Mr. Ricardo, can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Ricardo.
This here application is for a renovation of the existing Burger King on North Ocean Avenue. This here is a new concept plan that Burger King has developed, it'd probably be the first one in the state that looks like this. It's totally redone, the interiors, the exterior, some site improvements, and the amount of seating is the same, there's there's no change in that. We will be doing some additional work on landscaping, we're gonna be adding street trees along North Ocean Avenue and some additional bushes around the building itself. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Have you received a copy of the staff recommendations? Mr. Ricardo?
I have not.
Okay.
They're up on the screen.
Commissioner has them on the screen, can you see them?
I'm looking at my rendering.
Rendering?
The rendering of the Burger King, yeah, it's still on my screen.
You don't see the staff recommendations?
I do not. Nothing's changing, it's elevation and the rendering.
Does everybody see staff recommendations other than Mr. Ricardo?
Yes.
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 All right, can I just read them quickly?
Please.
Okay, number one, approval of plans, color renderings and architectural plans prepared by yourself dated one nineteen twenty one. Two, the existing dumpster and transformer enclosure shall be painted to match the proposed facade or shall receive the same facade treatment to match the facade change. Three, provide street trees with a minimum of four inch and an equal amount to thirty inch, thirty foot, I can't read it, thirty thirty foot on center from the preferred list in town code. Five, four, provide ADA compliant parking, stall, striping and signage. Five, if any new or altered exterior lighting is proposed, provide a lighting plan in compliance with the exterior lighting standards of town code. Six, obtain building permits and CO for all wall signs. Seven, this change of use determination cell expire three years from this date unless a building permit has been issued and substantial construction commenced in reliance thereon. And number eight, a CO shall not be issued until a written request for an inspection has been received by the planning division and a determination has been made that all the above conditions have been met.
Yep, you understand those, Mr. Ricardo?
I accept all those.
Counselors, anyone in the public on this application? Any board members have questions, Mr. Ricardo?
Mr. Chairman, Pete Zorko, I have two questions. The first one has to do with the facade, I see that they have the lettering up there, is there any changes or anything needed for approval for the lettering?
Well, we would need to make a sign app, a sign application for approval of that.
Okay. Does the current, does the current Burger King have that flame grilling since nineteen fifty four on it already or no?
I'm not sure about that one, I don't think, if it does, it's not in a location like that, it would be over the county.
Yeah, I didn't see it when I went by it. All right, and the other one would be, it's probably my new point, but on number three. It's probably pretty well spelled out, where you have four inch trees with thirty foot on center, I know on the rendering, on the plans that I saw, it showed six trees on there. Is there a need to put the amount of trees or just go with the thirty foot on center?
They are, those trees on the proposed site renovation are thirty foot on center.
And there's about six of them, is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Any questions by the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Board Member Pete Zorko, and I make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion by Mr. Zorko.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Ms. Kelly, Mr. Walutis.
I vote aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six oh. We haven't heard from anyone from number four yet, so when we get there, we'll make a date certain on that. I'd like to go back to item number one. Public storage at Mount Sinai, we're holding that to April fifth for additional elevation modifications. Item number two, West Funeral Home at Center Riches.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application to modify the previously approved plan for two thousand eight hundred and sixty four square foot, one story addition to an existing funeral home including expansion of parking lot with staff recommendations one through four, last revised March, March second, twenty twenty one as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Mr. Zorko?
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly? Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutis?
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six oh. Item three, Luccheros at Center Riches.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application to modify the previous approval for an addition to a restaurant with staff recommendations one through six, last revised February eleventh, twenty twenty one as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Secondly, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zorko.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote.
Mr. Walutis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith? Who did I miss?
Mr. Zorko?
I went first.
Oh, okay.
The chair votes aye, motion carries six oh. Item number four, I need a date certain, I guess that would be the April fifth meeting, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to hold this matter till the April fifth hearing.
Was that Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Karen, Karen Dunn, I'll second that motion.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mr. Zorko.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutis?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Item number four, eleven ten Hallack area will be held on April fifth. Item number five, Burger King at Ocean Avenue.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Board Member Pete Zorko, and I make a motion to approve this application with all staff comments. One through eight dated three ten twenty one, twenty twenty one, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Mr. Zorko.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Patricia Kelly, I second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Zorko, second by Ms. Kelly, Mr. Walutis.
I vote aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six oh. Item number six, the Church of Saint Gerard, Mahalia.
It's, Mr. Chairman, this is Richard Smith, make a motion to approve the subject site plan revisions with condition, with two conditions, staff recommendations, number one and two, last revised March tenth, two thousand twenty one as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
This is Karen Dunn, I'll second that motion.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mr. Zorko.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith? And chair votes aye, motion carries six oh. Item number seven, Colonial Youth at Mastick.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve this application to convert Knights of Columbus to daycare facility with staff recommendations one through nine, last revised three sixteen twenty one as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Zorko.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutis?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six oh. Item number eight, McDonald's Corporation at Mannerville.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application to add a side by side drive through, facade renovations, ADA ADA upgrades with staff recommendations one through eleven, last revised March second, twenty twenty one and one planning bed board variance eighty five dash eight five two as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Okay, motion by Ms. Dunn.
Second, Richard Smith.
Secondly, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zorko.
I vote aye.
Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutis?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six oh. Item number nine is being held on May third, item number ten, Michael J. Grant Funeral Home at Quorum.
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve Walutis, I make a motion to approve this application for the construction of a one story addition of fifteen hundred eighteen point seventeen square feet and three hundred ninety four point six seven square feet basement to the Grant Funeral Home, subject to staff recommendations one through eight and an additional number, recommendation number nine, to read contingent on the rendering submitted on three eighteen a 31821 dated 31821, also subject to one, uh, planning board board variance, which is number 85-855A, as covenants and condition of the approval.
Motion by Mr. Willoudis.
Uh, this is Board Number Pete Zarcone, and I will second that motion.
Secondly, Mr. Zarcone, Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six oh. Item number 11 is being held on April 5th, on the decision calendar, PK Metals at Corum.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Steve Willoudis, do we need SECR on this, I'm not sure.
That's a good question, I don't have it on my paper, but, uh, counselor?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't have it on on my.
I don't have it.
Okay. Okay, then I I make an application to approve this site plan, uh, for the improvements to the existing PK Metal Recycling and Scrap Metal Facility.
Can I, I'm sorry for interrupting, Mr. Willoudis, but we do need SECR.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't have.
Okay, so first of all, I make an application for a negative declaration as to SECR.
Motion for index deck by Mr. Willoudis.
This is Board Number Pete Zarcone, I'll second that motion.
Second by Mrs. Zarcone, Ms. Kelly?
Uh, I recuse myself from the application originally.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
It's done.
Aye.
Motion carries six oh for SECR.
Five oh, isn't? Mr. Chairman, five oh, did she recuse herself?
I recuse myself?
No, no, Pat, Pat Kelly?
Oh, I didn't hear.
I did.
So it's five oh and one recusal?
Five oh one, yeah.
Okay, so the motion is five oh against with one abstention, or recusing being Ms. Kelly? You have a motion?
Yes, I have a further motion, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this site plan, uh, improvements to the existing PK Metals Recycling and Scrap Metal Facility uh, with 2,500, 594 square foot of existing offices, uh, receiving, storage, mechanics, and welding shop, and 3,872 square feet of existing machinery, storage, and processing, along with, uh, uh, subject to staff recommendations one through 12, last dated March 4th, 2021, and also, uh, with the following, uh, special permits. Planning Board Special Permit number 85-864-point K, and five, a planning board, uh, land development variances, which I'll read, 85-843-point A-point four, 85-point 843-point A-point three, 85-843-point B-point C, 85-843-point eight, point two-point C, 85-843-point eight-point three, and also a planning board parking variance 85-852, and 85-85J, and also a planning board special permit 85-869K, uh, as can, as as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Excuse me, Mr. Willoudis, I think the last parking variance was 85-855.
Right. And then it wasn't eight, it was B.
It was. On the third one down, I think you missed number two, it's 85-843-point B-point two-point six, I don't think you put the B in there.
All right, so let's put that into the into the recommendation.
And the staff recommendations, there's 11 of them, and they're last dated 3821, I have them up on the screen. Um, so that's the motion you're making, right, Mr. Willoudis, what's up on the screen and all those variances there?
Let me look, hold on. Yes, that's the application I'm making.
Okay, so that's your motion.
That's my motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Willoudis.
And this is Board Number Pete Zarcone, I'll second that motion.
Secondly, Mrs. Zarcone, Ms. Kelly?
She's abstaining.
She has to say it.
All right.
Ms. Kelly?
I recuse myself.
It's like pulling teeth. Are you?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
It's done.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh, with Ms. Kelly abstaining. Uh, 520 William Floyd at Shirley is staying on the decision calendar, did the U-Haul, BZI, so yet? Item number 14, U-Haul.
Staying on the decision calendar.
Are we still waiting on the BZI approval?
Yes.
We are. Is there anything the board would like to discuss before we adjourn?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, have a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, this is Board Number Pete Zarcone, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Zarcone, Ms. Kelly?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Ms. Kelly, Mr. Willoudis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, meaning adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.